I know, I know.
Test, test. The following is the recording of the City of Lemon Grove City Council Meeting on July eighteen twenty-two three at six P M.
Did you see? I think I saw you.
Welcome to the City of Lemon Grove City Council Meeting. I would like to remind everyone, please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Speaker, will you please hold all or receive council members to go on the record as an attendant?
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember LeBaron? And Madam Mayor, I have just been informed that Councilmember LeBaron will not be joining us today. Mayor Protem Gaskell?
Here.
Mayor Vasquez?
Here.
We have the form of the council.
Thank you. I would like to ask Councilmember Mendoza to lead us in the court.
My first and final oath of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda? As I see that we do not have any changes to the agenda, um, I do have a notation here that we do not have any presentations this evening. And so we'll move forward into the general public comment portion of the meeting. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the city, the, the public may express their comments and concerns pertaining to items on the, not, items not on the agenda tonight. Please note that according to state law, the city council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directed to follow up with the speaker or the topic may be brought to a city council meeting uh, for consideration at a future date. According to Lemon Grove Municipal Code Chapter Two, Point One Four, Point One Five Zero, all remarks must be addressed to the city council and the body and not to any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. And I will note that I believe we are having a issue with the timer. So our city clerk will, uh, time this speaker. And when we, um, reach the thirty-second mark, he will say thirty seconds. And then, um, we will move on to the next speaker. Um, Speaker, do we have any figures upstairs to move? First, we will start with John O'Wood, followed by Teresa Rosenac. Uh, Mr. Wood, if you can help me for one second, we want to make sure that we capture, um, your, your voice on the recording. So just give us one second.
John O'Wood, I attended many city council meetings and all of the marijuana sentencing process. I don't believe the city is following Measure B correctly. This is a request for any and all documentation, filings, and records turned in by the performance of Measure B in twenty sixteen. The impartial analysis by the city attorney did not being followed to the detriment of the Lemon Grove taxpayers. This affects the city's power line, this favors certain applicants, and hurts others. Basically, the city approved the void application according to the municipal code. This is wrong. This is abuse of power. Council makes decisions out of spite. Council will deny the claims and its permits. The mayor said she wasn't there, but the recording says the detriment. Stop with the lies. You can't approve or deny applications just because you want to. There are laws that must be followed. City council and city staff are not following the municipal code for cannabis until they can approve and deny who they want, when they want. As a taxpayer citizen of Lemon Grove, I demand the council to rectify their wrongs immediately or face more lawsuits that will include applicants or cannabis permits. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next we have Teresa Rosenac. Followed by Margarita Gillan.
Madam Mayor and city council officials, the cannabis licensing process appears to be rigged for those the city favors and against those the city doesn't like. After researching Measure B, which is not easy, and Lemon, Lemon Grove Municipal Code, I believe city council and city staff have erroneously approved favored applicants while denying deserving applicants. For example, and one of the basis of my concerns is the approval of eighty-two ninety Broadway and the subsequent denial of eighty-two eighty Broadway's denial for a time extension for the applicant's CUP. It appears that the council and staff did not follow the municipal code to approve eighty-two ninety and did not follow the municipal code to deny eighty-two eighty Broadway and the time extension. According to the staff report, eighty-two ninety Broadway was approved without a zoning clearance or a minor use permit. In addition, eighty-two ninety Broadway didn't follow the proper procedures for a public hearing. Somehow, the public hearing was waived. Eighty-two ninety Broadway did not have a public hearing within the timeframe of the municipal code. This makes their appli- application and CUP invalid. Council cannot make the necessary findings with an invalid CUP. If the proper procedure and guidelines were followed, city staff and council would and should have denied the eighty-two ninety Broadway permit for being within a thousand feet of the eighty-two eighty Broadway permit. The improper procedure costs taxpayers time and money, and now another lawsuit. The invalid CUP at eighty-two ninety is now brought to the attention of city council and the city attorney. We deserve better, and I have said this many times before. Council must uphold the laws of the municipal code, eighty-two ninety Broadway, and must be denied. And eighty-two eighty Broadway must be approved according to the laws of Lemon Grove. And as a side note, Madam Mayor, you were at the North Avenue public hearing and you voted, and you called me a liar at the last meeting, and I want an apology. Thank you.
Take the slide that was part of that presentation. It said on the slide that I was not there. Perhaps that slide needed to be corrected. Thank you. Next, we have, um, Margarita Gillan, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your last name, followed by Linda Hammond.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Margaret Yan. I am a Lemon Grove native. I have been, um, born and raised. My children are here. I gone to school here in the Lemon Grove District. My children are currently students and graduates. I'm here to represent the Public Works Department. He gave us a paper to read about asking the city council to please fight for the employees. I have seen firsthand when they go out and clean up the mess, that all the encampments are leaving behind. And when I mean mess, right in, in, right at eighty-two ninety location underneath the bridge, I mean, it's never-ending. I have seen firsthand when they have, um, called out at night. I have a family member that's currently there working, and it's affecting my family directly. I am here to ask that you guys please consider that they do get that increase in wages like everybody else is. I don't know what else you guys need, but we are here to join the support. We want to wear oranges for the public department, so. Make that into consideration.
Uh, thank you. Next we have Brenda Hammond, followed by Matthew Vers- Verskinsky. And I apologize in advance if I said your last name wrong. Are you ready for me?
So, um, ten years ago, I did a series of public comments at Lemon Grove La Mesa and Elkhorn City Council meeting. I started in Lemon Grove saying the same thing of La Mesa and then Elkhorn. It's time to refresh. Only this time I started in Elkhorn and then La Mesa because it took me complaining what was happening here in Lemon Grove to be taken care of. But it was taken care of. Um, and here's again. It was racist sexist remarks to me and tried to get my reaction for, um, for recording. Yet I dropped the F-bomb. Over and over and over again while being recorded. Here is the same thing I've been saying again in all three city councils. Mess with me, I'm gonna drop the F-bomb. But you're gonna mess with someone else and you're gonna get hurt and you're gonna deserve it. Sometimes I've been known to drop the F-bomb over and over and over again. Um, that's my OCD setting in. But you deserve it. It's not messing with me. Just because someone says something over and over again doesn't mean they have PTSD or bipolar. These are just excuses to put people on meds that they don't need and it makes them that way. Okay, so the F-bomb. Fun and amiwawa. It's a jisikay song. By the way, if you see me driving down the middle of the street, it's because I'm avoiding potholes. Twelve hundred dollars worth of work two weeks ago. I expect to be reimbursed. I think there should be something in our tax dollars, gas tax, to pay for that, right? Um, oh, I skipped something. Last night I was assaulted again by four women at a restaurant close by. What they said to me before they pushed up against me and told me I was scared. Why would that doctor pick a white girl? You'll hear about it later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Matthew Verskinsky. And again, I apologize if I said your last name wrong, uh, followed by.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Max Verskinsky, representing, um, our city employees and public works. I want to thank our members and the families who have come out tonight, um, after a long day of work to be here. Your employees, they're doing their work and part right now to move negotiations along as fast as possible. We'll have proposals presented to the city, all of them, by August twenty-second. This is a very fast pace in negotiations. It's all these proposals being so quickly. Please understand, as long as there is not much back and forth on the proposals, then it will move very quickly. Which means it will take a couple months, but not a couple days. Please understand. My members, your, your employees have, have a large turnover rate here at the city due to low wages, unmanageable workload, and high expectations of what they need to do and when they need to do it. Our proposal will try to address their concerns. Our members will have more certainty in city rules in the MOU, uh, and look forward to moving forward on it. Also, I'd like to invite you, if you're willing to, to join and listen and observe one of our party sessions coming up. We have, our next one is Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at ten A M. And then we have our next one, which will be August twenty-second, again at ten A M. Thank you all very much.
Uh, thank you so very much. Next we have Dan. Um, next we have Sam Vanderos, uh, followed by Wood, Lynn Hall.
Good evening. My name is Sam Vanderos. I'm the supervisor for Lemon Grove. I am asking that city council, please fight for us, the public work employees. Get involved in making sure we have the wages, benefits, and rights we deserve for our service to the city, its residents, and businesses. I've been here forty-four years. We need this change. We need to add this to my experience. It's been a great experience here, but we need this change, and it's for the future of Lemon Grove. Thank you.
Next we have Wood, Lynn Hall, followed by Nick Rubio.
Good evening, council. My name is Chris Verskinsky. And I just want to, uh, stand in solidarity with my coworkers and the public work team. And I'm asking that the city council, please fight for us, the public works employees, to get involved and make sure that the wages, benefits, and the rights we deserve for our service to the city, its residents, and its business. We all there every day, working hard to help the community and to try to fill these potholes with the few employees that we do have. So I'm asking that you take this into consideration for what I see you. Thank you.
Hi folks, my name is Nick Rubio. I'm an employee of Lemon Grove.
Can you get closer to the mic? Thank you.
Hi folks, uh, my name is Nick Rubio. Uh, I'm an employee of Lemon Grove. Uh, these are some of the finest folks. I've had the privilege to work with. I've worked in many places. These are hardworking, dedicated people at Lemon Grove. And, uh, I'm asking the city council, please fight for our, our public works employees, uh, getting involved and making sure they have the wages and benefits and rights they deserve for the service to the city, its residents, and businesses. Thank you.
Next we have Tanya Arity, followed by Nick Sarisco. Crossco. If, if you could get closer and speak directly into the mic.
My name is Tanya. Good afternoon. My name is Tanya. I work for Public Works. I'm type two right now. Been working for the city for about a year and a half already. Um, I'm also, uh, resident of the community, and I see how everything works around. When I started working for the city, I didn't know that we had such a small group of people working for the city. Uh, I would always ask myself, why are the parks, um, with graffiti? I have my kids living in the city. They go to school in the city. And I just always had questions when I was just a resident, but as an employee now, I am asking, please be, uh, on our side, support us, to make sure that we get the right benefits, the rights, and the right compensation for working hard out here with such a small group of, uh, employees. Um, we can only do certain amount. And we really, really need more employees to come in and join us. And we've been having a hard time within this past year. I've been a witness of how many employees come in and they quit. Um, we've personally been aware of the reasons why they leave, and one of them is definitely our wages. Um, and the time that we're here, all the overtime that we have to put in with such a small group, and how much we get overwhelmed with work. Um, I feel like we deserve a better lifestyle within our community. I feel like we deserve better, um, just better benefits for everybody in general, and, um, a lot of support from our community, our residents, our business owners, and all of you as well. Thank you.
Next, Crossco.
Crossco, employee and, uh, resident of the city. Been here four years now. Like everyone's saying, turn around. I'm here to ask the city council, please fight for us, the public works employees. Get involved, making sure we have the wages, benefits, and rights that we deserve for our service to the city, its residents, and businesses.
And I wanted to thank, uh, the public works employees for coming today. I will check with, um, staff to see if there are any comments, any public comments. As there are no comments at this time, um, I will report to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'd like to move the rule.
I'll second. The motion and a second, and last, a third, all rolled.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gaskell?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. To the board of justice, and what else?
Thank you. Item number two is the public hearing and adoption of the resolution authorizing sewer service charges for the Lemon Grove Sanitation District to be collected on the same property tax roll for fiscal year twenty twenty-three or before. Speaker, have all the notices required by law, have those been given? And do we have the complete, um, file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents? Have those been provided?
Madam Mayor, the notices have been provided and our documents have been filed with the city council.
Thank you. I'll turn this over to, to the attorney, as the council, if they have any disclosure conflicts of interest, um, related to this particular item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just ask, um, each member of the city council to state for the record whether you have any conflicts of interest, or whether you've had any expedited communications. Thank you.
And we will start with, um, Councilmember Mendoza.
No conflicts or communications.
Councilmembers, now.
No conflicts or communications.
Mayor Protem Gaskell?
No conflicts or, or communications.
And I do not have, uh, any conflict or any communication. Now, I'll turn this over to Izzy Martin, who is our public works director, to present this matter.
Good evening, chair members of the district board. Tonight's public hearing is to seek the board's approval authorizing sewer service charges for the Lemon Grove Sanitation District to be collected on the same ago property tax roll for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-four. For the past six months, staff has come before the board on various sewer-related items. So I'll just do a brief background as to, uh, those meetings that we came before the board. So I'll just do a brief background as to those meetings that we came before the board, and how that differs tonight. In January of this year, staff came before the board to seek for correction on rate structure options for the completion of a sewer rate study. At that meeting, the board authorized staff to move forward with a volume-based rate structure for commercial properties, and directed staff to keep a flat rate structure for residential properties. On April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the board held a public hearing and adopted ordinance number thirty-three establishing the annual sewer service charges and method for calculating those charges for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, for the sewer rate study that was adopted at that meeting. The ordinance was later formally adopted at a second reading on May the second, three. In order to levy and collect the sewer charges adopted by the board, the California Health and Safety Code requires the filing of a sewer service charge report, which is attached to your general report. The sewer service charge report provides a list of each parcel within the sanitation district and its corresponding applicable service charge. Upon filing the, upon filing the sewer service charge report, the public hearing was then scheduled for this evening to provide the public with an opportunity to provide comments. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, there were no rate increases adopted. However, commercial accounts will see an increase or a decrease to their bills as a result of the district moving to a volume-based structure rate. If approved this evening, the parcels and assessments as outlined in attachment B from your general report will be filed with the County Auditor and Controller by August tenth, where we levy and collection of sewer service charges. On the screen here is just a summary of those rates. So residential rates remain at sixty-five, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, which is the fixed amount. For commercial properties, they will initially be charged, their base rate is six hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, and they will be charged at an amount in accordance with their volume base. For every hundred cubic feet, they will be charged those rates that you see down below in accordance to the category that they were placed in. So for commercial accounts, you have a low, medium, and high category. Staff's recommendation this evening is to conduct a public hearing, take public comment, make a finding regarding the number of protests received, and if the majority is not received, adopt a resolution authorizing the submittal of the sewer service charge assessments to the San Diego County Auditor and Controller for collection by August tenth. That concludes staff's reports, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so very much. And what I will do now is I will open the public hearing, and I will check with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips regarding this particular item.
Madam Mayor, you do not have any speaker slips?
Thank you. And since we do not have any speaker slips, I will now look to our City Council members to see if you have any questions of staff, starting with Councilmember Mendoza.
On page, on page eight of the report, but it's page sixteen on, you know, on our screen. There's a little table at the top that lists, this is for residential. The charge for this year and the next five years. But we will vote on that every year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So this, this is just, we voted on, this is the most that we could raise sewer rates, but we could decide to either not raise them at all, or raise them at a lower percent.
That's correct. At the April eighteenth meeting, the board set the ceilings for the next five years. It's staff's intention to come before the board to recommend whether there's an increase or no increase up to that ceiling bound.
I'm just clarifying that, because folks have some questions. And then, another question that someone asked me was whether this, whether or how this will, might affect a home, a home business. I didn't see anything in the report to address that.
Yeah, but the sewer service charge report and sewer rate study, if we doesn't take that into consideration, it's based off of a land use code that the county provides that feeds into the sewer service categories. So if you were classified as a single-family household, or a single-family parcel, you were assessed that rate. Okay, if the county assigns you a commercial land use code, you are then considered commercial. So a home, a home-based business would be considered residential.
As we add, most of our home-based businesses are really very small businesses. So they're like accounting firms, or a craft-making business. They're not an owner of his business like you see on Rowton.
Thank you. Councilmember Snow.
Thank you so much for appearing this in the presentation. Over the course of us listening to the sewer reports and the presentations, can you confirm that for commercial properties, we are moving forward with an approach that's pushing for fairness and justice, where it's based on the percentage of usage? And that also, if there is undue hardship, or they believe that there's an issue with the amounts that are being assessed based on water usage, that there, that there is an appeal process available to them, so that we're not paying two owners of further on any particular business?
Yes, so at the April eighteenth meeting, as part of the ordinance, staff adopted a procedure for which somebody can come to staff and question their charges, and that procedure is outlined in the ordinance. And I'm sorry, the second part of your, the first part of your question? Regarding it was, rather than a consumption basis, is more of an equitable approach, and I would confirm it is.
Thank you. And Mayor Rowton Gaskell?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I feel like we've seen this coming and been making the, making the steps needed. I really appreciate the questions my colleagues had.
Thank you, and I do not have any questions at this time. I will check one more time in the second round with Councilmember Mendoza. Do you have any questions or comments?
One more. Did we, we also discussed an appeal process for residential? That there, did we incorporate that as well?
Yes, so for, yes, we, we did the appeal process. Considered both commercial and residential.
And councilmembers now.
No further questions.
Thank you. And Mayor Rowton Gaskell?
I have no questions.
Thank you, and I will check with staff to see if we have any further comments to make. Thank you. And now it's time to close the public hearing. I will give a motion. I'll move that we close the public hearing. Second. I will have a motion and a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Councilmember, Councilmember Snow.
Aye.
Councilmember, Director Snow.
Aye.
Director Snow. Director Laverne, aye. Director Mendoza.
Aye.
Director Gaskell.
Aye.
Chair Vasquez.
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Thank you, and now it is time to deliberate. So I will start with Councilmember Mendoza. I think we've pretty much covered this over the course of the last few months. I'm, I'm ready to move forward with approval. To adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four sewer service charge report and ordering the transmission of charges to the Attorney and Controller for collection. Thank you, and I would, could I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you also please include the finding of the protests in your motion as well?
It should be, there is no majority difference.
I will include that. Thank you. We do have a motion, and I'll go ahead and segue to Councilmember Snow.
Aye. Second.
And I will take that as, though we do not really need to deliberate here, because we do have a motion and a second. I'll just check very quickly with Mayor Rowton Gaskell. And did you have anything you wanted to say? Oh, okay, so we're, we're ready for the votes. And we do have a motion and a second, and it's our city clerk to call a roll.
Director Mendoza.
Aye.
Director Laverne, aye. Director Snow.
Aye.
Director Gaskell.
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution authorizing annual charge for the Lemon Grove Railway Lighting District to be collected on the San Diego County Property Tax Roll for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. City clerk, have all the notices required by law, have those been given? And are the complete files, set of files of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents, have those been provided?
Madam Mayor, all notices have been provided, and all the records are filed with the clerk's office.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to the city attorney to ask council if they have any disclosures, conflicts of interest relating to this particular item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like we did in the last item, please identify any conflicts of interest or any exportate communications that you have had on this matter.
Thank you. We will start with Councilmember Mendoza.
I have none.
Councilmember Snow.
I have none.
Mayor Rowton Gaskell.
Nothing to report.
And I do not have anything to disclose. And so I'll turn this over to Izzy Morvian to present the staff report.
Good evening, chair members of the board. Tonight's public hearing is to seek the board's approval on authorizing the collection of lighting assessments on the San Diego County Property Tax Roll for the Lemon Grove Roadway Lighting District for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Under the provisions of the nineteen seventy-two Landscaped Lighting Act, the city formed the Lemon Grove Roadway Lighting District in nineteen seventy-nine to fund the operation, maintenance, and improvements of public street lighting. The lighting district was formed with two zones. These are known as Zone A, Broadway's local benefit, and Zone B, which is your general benefit zone. Zone A includes streetlights placed at mid-block benefiting specific localized areas. Funding for Zone A is provided by a special fixed assessment on local benefit parcels, which is why we're here this evening. Zone B includes streetlights at intersections, cul-de-sacs, and other terminations of streets, and is defined as benefiting the public at large. Funding for Zone B is provided through a share of the city's one-person ad valorem, property tax, and city general funds. This evening's public hearing is to seek authorization from the board to approve the annual levy and collect assessments through the San Diego County Property Tax Roll for those parcels in Zone A. The assessment rate for Zone A is twelve dollars per benefit unit. This rate has been unchanged since nineteen ninety-seven. Each affected parcel is assigned to a benefit unit based on its land use, and the number of assigned benefit units is then multiplied by the annual assessment rate. This for reference, single-family homes, or assign one benefit unit. In order to collect assessments on the county tax roll, Landscaped Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two requires a resolution declaring the intention to levy and collect assessments and a engineer's report that details the improvements to be maintained and the method of apportionment of assessments. The resolution of intention and an engineer's report was adopted by the board on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. At that meeting, set the public hearing for July eighteenth to provide property owners an opportunity to comment or protest the proposed assessments. Approved this evening, the parcels and assessments as outlined in attachment B of your general report will be filed with the County Auditor and Controller by August tenth for the levy and collection of assessments. This light here just outlines the process for, for collecting those assessments. Staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, receive public comment, make a finding regarding the number of protests received, and if the majority is not received, adopt a resolution confirming the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and engineer's report, and ordering the transmission of charges to the San Diego County Auditor and Controller for collection. That concludes staff's recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so very much. We will now open the public hearing, and I will check with the city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips for this item.
Very mean.
Thank you. And now it's time for questions, and I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza. I'm sorry, it's, I'm going to put the, page, I think it was page six. Could you, could you describe, so lights in Zone A that are placed at mid-block benefiting specific localized areas? What would be considered the localized area?
So Zone A is primarily your residential streets, so you have a street that's a couple blocks long. It'd be a street light in between those two blocks. So those parcels receive, the property owners of those parcels, the parcels receive a special benefit, i.e. streetlight, or street lighting. Zone B, which is your general benefit, those streetlights are primarily on commercial streets. So Broadway, Lemon Grove Ave., and there's the passive buyer, visitor. So the benefit there is more general. And so that's the distinction, the distinction between the two zones. And because the engineer's report that was adopted identifies there's a parcel that receives a specific benefit, in this case, lighting, per the Landscaped Lighting Act assessment charge.
I was just, I was trying to figure this out in my own neighborhood, because there's some, some lights are on telephone poles, and some lights are not. And it's a pretty long street, San Miguel, and it's
And it's a pretty long street, San Miguel, and it's the, you know, there, there's lights where the school is and where the church is and, um, so I, I, what I'm, I think what I'm getting at is, I'm, I'm thinking probably every residential unit on Bath Street is, is, is going to be assessed, but just for one unit.
So that would normally be the case, however, San Miguel is considered, uh, I don't know what they call it, like, so, um, the lights on those streets are under the general benefit government.
Okay. Good to know. And Councilmember Mendoza, also, the lights that are on the poles, the wooden poles, both belong to SDG. Yeah, and the lights, um, and, and the lights that are on, um, concrete poles belong to the city or part of the district. That's on the website, um, a, a, a website. Um, and just for every, if you're around Lemon Grove residents, it, it's also on the website to call SDG if that light's not working or the number to call the city. If, if, because one thing I, I noticed, um, when I was walking neighborhoods last year is there are quite a few lights that, that aren't working and people aren't sure who, who they should, uh, call about that. So we, we should try to get the word out to people who've called, but it is on the city website. Uh, thank you so much and I will remind the councilmembers that, um, we are, uh, just asking questions with that. And so if you do have additional comments, uh, please save those comments to our second round. I will, um, segue to, uh, Councilmember Snow.
Uh, to be clear, there is no increase from last year. We haven't ever seen an increase in those rates, the nineties, is that right?
That's correct.
Mayor Porton Gaskell.
This might not impact what we do today, but I, just for my general information, I, I, I'm wondering where it says local benefit, that the assessment rate of twelve dollars per, per benefit unit, that, that doesn't seem like a lot. And, and I'm wondering if you know, like, do most people in Lemon Grove pay that? Half the people in Lemon Grove? Uh, and really what I'm getting at is whether people in Lemon Grove would be just as well off if we just charged everybody equally and considered it, you know, considered a community benefit, have streetlights and charged everybody the same. It wouldn't really be that different in people's bills. If that sounds like a question.
I'll take a snap.
Okay.
Yeah, twelve dollars is, uh, respectively nominal. It generates about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars a year in assessments. So do you take into consideration our maintenance contract for, um, traffic signal maintenance? I'm sorry, streetlight maintenance? Yes, we're, we're, we're fairly break even and that's with the addition of the contribution of the ad liborum tax. So, um, if, if the council or the board wanted to do a citywide assessment, you would have to go through a clock to eighteen and hold a ballot or a vote of the voters, uh, to brief everybody under that umbrella.
Okay, okay. Do I not be worth it for that amount of money? Um, that, that, that's a, that's a very helpful, uh, general information answer. Um, and, and would you, would you be, give me a ballpark for the, are we talking about like one-third pay this and two-thirds don't? I notice Jennifer doesn't pay it. I don't think I do. Um, but twelve dollars, I might not have noticed. Uh, do you know, do most people pay this in Lemon Grove? So.
It's on the tax roll. I, I don't have that information. I can follow up with you with, with those details. In total, there's seventy-two-hundred parcels, thereabouts.
That are charged or that?
That fall within Zone A and Zone B. Um, and, and I'd have to break the, the information further, uh, to see how many, what the percentage would break down because I don't have that information.
Councilmember Mendoza is telling you that this is on, is on the website. So how many are A and how many are B? Well, this, that's very, uh, this is good general education. Um, and I think I used up my two questions.
Uh, thank you so very much. I do have one question here. I know that it was mentioned, um, uh, majority of protests received and so, um, can you tell us exactly what that means as it relates to this particular, in the item, uh, majority of protests?
Yeah, so, uh, if the council received, um, protests over thirty-five-hundred, then that would be considered a majority protest.
Uh, thank you so much for, uh, defining exactly what it is. I will move the second round of questions and this will be your opportunity to write comments as well. So are you want to, Councilmember Mendoza?
I, I have no further questions.
Councilmembers, no?
No further questions.
Mayor Porton Gaskell?
I'm gonna guess the number is less than thirty-five-hundred, but I need to know how many protests did we get?
Of course, received no protests. I believe the clerk's office did also receive no protests. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you so very much. And I'll just ask staff further comments that you would like to make regarding this item. Thank you. And it is now time to close the public hearing. Uh, do we have a motion?
Well, I can make a motion. I want to make sure that I got it all here. That close the public hearing. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And who has a second?
I'll say.
And I'll, City Attorney, call the roll.
Director Snow.
Aye.
Director LeBaron, have said. Director Mendoza.
Aye.
Director Gaskell.
Aye.
Trey Vasquez.
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Thank you. And now it's time for deliberations. Uh, I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza. I have no further comments. Thank you. Councilmember Snow.
I have no further comments.
Mayor Porton Gaskell.
I think it's unusual that we have something that involves money and that nobody protests.
Hello, thank you. Agreed.
Um, so I, it's probably, I think the fact that there's no protests, uh, is, is worth, worth noting and I don't know if that's because the amount of money is very low or because people think the philosophy makes a lot of sense, but either way, uh, I, I'm happy to support it.
And, um, as we are in deliberations, I, I do have a question for you. Would that be a motion or?
I didn't want to jump ahead of my colleagues who might have comments. It sounds like we're all ready for a motion. Let me make sure I got it all here. Um, I'd like to move that we make a finding, uh, that, uh, there were no protests received and that we adopt a resolution confirming fiscal year twenty-two-three to twenty-four engineer's report and ordering the transmission of charges to the San Diego County Auditor and Controller for collection.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
I'll, City Attorney, to call the roll.
Director LeBaron, have said. Director Snow.
Aye.
Director Mendoza.
Aye.
Director Gaskell.
Aye.
Trey Vasquez.
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Thank you. Item number four is to adopt a resolution declaring emergency shelter crisis and to introduce ordinance four-six-three to adopt by reference, is a key of the twenty-two California Building Standard Code, code, that is the California Building Standard Code, Title twenty-four. I will turn this over to Leo Romero, who is the city manager, to present the staff report. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is going to be a two-person report and I will introduce Mr. Mattson a little, little later in the report. So thank you for being here tonight and, and I think Mr. Merdian is gonna help move the slides ahead, um, next slide. But just as some background for the city council, about a year ago, this city council, uh, along with the other four county cities and the county of San Diego, took a historic step to work as a region to combat homelessness. One of the, one of the things we did was create an MOU so the region can work together as an entity opposed to individual cities. And this is just a little bit of the background of the slides as to why we, um, we wanted to do a regional approach, um, again for, to combat homelessness. One of those is, it's the same within our jurisdictional boundaries. Um, homeless individuals actually move amongst the jurisdictions, both in the county and with, um, uh, the incorporated cities. Um, the regional approach will help us leverage resources. So when we go out for grants, we are a bigger region and we have a better chance of getting the grants, especially if we're going up against the city of San Diego or the city of Chula Vista. And second of all, is really, it's a goal to establish shared resources, um, amongst the four jurisdictions. So not one, one jurisdiction shares the burden of, say, a, a shelter or, or low-barrier emergency shelter or creating affordable housing in which homeless individuals can transfer into. So tonight, we're here to do our next step in our commitment on that MOU. So the first step we need to do as, as a true partner in this MOU is to create an emergency, to pass a resolution by the council that creates a shelter emergency crisis. This resolution is absolutely needed if we want to apply for grant funding for homeless services. And whether we are the recipient, um, or whether we are sub-recipient, meaning you're part of the application process, this is something that the state and federal government will be asking it. This has been passed by the local jurisdiction. So what this emergency resolution will do is it allows shelters, um, to be on publicly owned or publicly leased sites. Um, it creates a statutory exemption to CEQA. Um, you know, ordinary negligence is waived, waived. Building safety, building, building safety and health requirements are suspended in some cases because that really depends on the type of, um, shelter or housing that is proposed. Um, this resolution is required to, um, as prescribed by law and the legislation is there to actually trigger all of, but I just said previously. Next slide. So that is one part that we're here today. The second part is leading into what Mr. Mattson will be, um, sharing with you all. Mr. Matt, Mr. Mattson is our planning, uh, our special planning consultant. He helped us update our last building code. So I brought him back to assist us in updating our building code to add pending P, which will help trigger some of those aspects with, um, our emergency housing shelter. Mr. Mattson.
City, city manager. This is a process. It's building upon what we started at City Lemon Grove back in two, twenty-eighteen. I don't know if you remember that or not, but you actually identified some housing areas within STA seven, uh, actually STA, uh, sorry. STA seven, sorry. So that, that set a, the area and criteria for that, but that falls under the city's only code where we have to have a, a plan development permit against the process. Since twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, the state came back in and they then amended the, the California Code Title twenty-four to allow emergency shelter housing. What it does is that, as Ms. Romero suggested, is that it also waives a lot of the, the building criteria and sets, uh, a standard for which the city can look at what individual parcels. So for instance, within the emergency shelter, they have a variety of different housing opportunities that you can have from tent cabins to, uh, sheltered housing to other canopy and then be allowing that to happen. But before you do that, you have to have the emergency declaration, which is the ordinance and the resolution that's before you tonight. So when you, by allowing that to happen, it gives us much more flexibility with the city to look at parcels, look at opportunities for grant funding as, to draw your attention. But also it sets some standards for us to take a look at. So for instance, as an example, for a building, then we have standards of, you know, it has to be thirty-five feet high and has to be this and that. Some of these standards can be waived. So you can have sleeping cabins down to seventy square feet. So there's some variation and flexibility based on the building codes, health and safety. One thing they do not waive is the fire safety. Fire safety is within the local jurisdiction for health and safety and fire access. So that doesn't get waived. That's, it's a standard based on enforcement of the local agencies. So that stays or remains as is. But as for the building code, the siding, the setbacks, the buffers, all that stuff creates some flexibility for the city as they go forward in time. Right now, you're gonna lock in with your existing codes, existing Title twenty-four. By adopting this emergency, it will allow us greater flexibility as opportunities come forward in time. Make sure I covered everything. Waver codes, uh, decisions, emergency housing and various things. Yeah, next slide. So here's where we adopted the regional development standards and procedures of design and development. Again, I mentioned the setbacks, the heights and the access, um, the, the operations and elders and structures. Um, they can be at various facilities. They can be smaller, they can be larger. It's like raising much more flexibility on the city's affordability on that. President Sein, this particular ordinance is four-sixty-three. It's complementary to what was done in December of four-sixty-two and as for the city adopted the California building code for twenty-twenty-two. So we're now tearing off on that again. So we're building these blocks up forward so we can go ahead and have better flexibility and opportunities for their building codes. With that, that ends my presentation. I'm available for answers if there are any questions. Can I add?
And may I just, Councilmember, one last word is, um, when we get to the next slide after questions, we're gonna have to take each, um, each item separately. So the resolution needs to be taken, take, uh, a vote on the resolution separately than the vote in connection on the ordinance. And with that, we'll, we'll help you have any answer questions. Thank you. And before we get to the questions, I'll check to see if we have any super slips regarding this particular item.
There are none.
Thank you. And so I will refer to Councilmember Mendoza. So we're, we're addressing two different issues here. The first one is whether to adopt a resolution declaring an emergency shelter crisis. Um, I have no questions about that. I, I think that there is an emergency shelter crisis in Lemon Grove, um, just based on, um, the homeless count that we did in January and, um, with the San Diego Task Force on the homeless and just our, our, our own general observations of, we live in this city and, um, we definitely see that, that this is a, this is a, has become a crisis. Um, so I, I really don't have any questions or, uh, issue with, with that and I understand the, um, the urgency. Uh, with regard to, um, ordinance four-sixty-three, um, so what we adopted in two thousand and eighteen was, it was part of our housing element, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so we, we designated an area, um, which is down by where Health and Human Services is.
There were several areas identified. I don't think one of them is.
And in designating those areas, one, we took a couple things into consideration and one thing was, uh, we, we wanted those areas to be near public transportation, uh, near things like, uh, stores and, um, facilities and, um, and, um, services that people could, um, avail themselves of, um, and not like in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It really wouldn't be convenient for us.
like in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It really wouldn't be convenient or desirable, I think, for anybody. How does, how does adopting this ordinance, I'm just not really clear on how this is different than what we did previously.
Appendix P will allow, they encourage success in this with having near, like, commercial or having their trolley stations. So, those would be sites that would be identified. There's no sites identified under Appendix P. It's up to the city to decide where those sites are. Basically, what this does is allows you the flexibility to build those wherever you desire to have those, based on the criteria that you've set. So, once you've identified a site, by having an Appendix P allows you some flexibility under those provisions to develop that site for your housing opportunity. So, it's not site-specific, it's a citywide one, it's based on what the city decides in department and how you want to do that. Really, it's just the provisions that allow you to do that in sometime in the future.
And would we, would that be part of the, what we're adopting tonight, or is that something we're going to develop down the line?
That's something developed down the line. This is just a placeholder to be able to have you take this opportunity to waive and examine certain standards that are currently under the codes now, and you also have in your zoning codes now that restricts these. So, by having an emergency Appendix P allows you that flexibility to go ahead and identify sites that where you might be able to modify some of the building standards and building setbacks and other things with them. It's up to you at some time in the future as those sites become opportunities for you.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Now?
Sometimes we use terms of art here, so I'm not sure that everybody understands what CEQA is, and that was one of the exemptions that came out of this. Can you explain a little bit about what CEQA stands for and what it means to have an exemption for that?
California Environmental Quality Act has been in for a long, long time, and it's been amended dozens and dozens of times based on court cases. But basically, this is, it's an avenue for development to be evaluated for their environmental merits. There's six or seven, actually, or it's like 12, certain topical areas from noise, air quality, to drainage, to land use, and stuff like that. So, what you do is they set thresholds that the project could be evaluated against that. So, you go from a little, little part would be like a mitigated megdech, which is to have some minor mitigations, all the way up to a general plan amendment and everything in between. The environmental process has to be taken into consideration for every single project that has a building code on it. So, if you do an application for MUP or CUP or a development process or commercial, that all requires you to do a CEQA evaluation, initial study that evaluates all those topical areas, and then at that point, kind of the city and staff determine whether or not which threshold you fall under. If you have a revitalizing commercial across the street, you wouldn't have a lot of, a lot of consideration because it's already a built-out urban environment. So, in that case, you might have a mitigated megdech because you have specific traffic or site issues or things like that that would require you to have additional review of that. So, that's pretty much what the CEQA is. It protects the environment and protects the communities. What we're doing with an Appendix P is that it allows you to have some exemptions. There's two clause sections allow you to have some exemptions within CEQA for these emergency shelter housing crisis sites. So, that'll be determined at that time when the site is identified.
The other question that I had is, well, I recognize that we've had comments about the encampments and difficulty on our resources in order to be able to clean up those encampments. I see people in the audience who are there every Monday, who are out there helping our homeless and reaching out to them. I'm seeing members of our community that struggle with housing and it's not, sometimes it's not visible. We have families living in cars or like two kids are living in grandma's house, two are over at their friend's house, and mom's living on a couch. And so, this is really separating families. So, I'm really grateful for the opportunity. I know how limited our funds are and how important it is to do this as a regional approach. And so, is this, passing this resolution necessary for us to move forward with our memorandum of understanding with the other East County members?
Absolutely. The cities of El Cajon and the cities of La Mesa have already had this on their docket and have passed this. I believe the city of CNT is looking at this as well. And the county of San Diego has passed this a long time ago. Mayor Tom Gasco.
I, Councilmembers, that doesn't smell as the questions that I would have. I was particularly interested in the relationship with the other cities and how we, I feel like I got what I needed. Thanks.
Thank you so very much. And I do not have any questions for now, so I'm going to go ahead and go to the second round of questions. But this will allow you to provide comments as well, starting with Councilmember Mendoza.
I have no further questions. And my only comment is, I guess I'm just a little wary about this because we do, you know, so what you're saying is when we're presented with a possible site to develop a homeless shelter, at that point, we will, the five of us will decide if that meets whatever criteria we may have in mind at that time.
Right. Each site has a specific criteria, you know, whether it's small, large, creed will buy, commercial activities, where transit locations are. So, all of those will come into play when you do the design of the site.
So, what I'm saying to my councilmembers is I like the idea of having some flexibility, but at the same time, we generally, we definitely need to proceed with caution as we identify these sites or sites, potential sites are brought forward to us.
Councilmembers, now?
I think most people in our community can walk around, especially in our downtown area, and know that we have a housing crisis, particularly a shelter crisis. It's even more difficult because back in the day, you could go from a shelter to permanent housing. And the success rate there, if we get somebody into a shelter and then within, you know, four to six months, they're able to transition into permanent housing. The problem is we have a lack of a force in housing right now, and it is a big problem that we have to confront. There is no way Lemon Grove by itself is going to be able to do this. It is definitely a regional problem. I'm out there every Tuesday, myself or my staff, at the East County Regional Homeless Resource. And there, we bring a bunch of different people in from a bunch of different organizations to do outreach, and that's out of El Cajon. And El Cajon has been really leading this area on homelessness. And we have a lot of ground to make up to be good partners in the East County region. I hear Councilmember Mendoza's cautions, but I think we're all very cautious about where we designate an area in order to be able to house people. These people have to be housed. It's a matter of dignity, and it's also a matter of public safety. If people are able to be housed and they feel more secure, we as a community feel more secure. And our businesses will thrive better, our workers will be less burdened, everything from fire to business to police, everything's impacted by this homeless crisis. And I think that this is a necessary step that we have to take to make sure that we can keep these people in our community, everybody with dignity and with safety.
Mayor Tom Gasco.
Yeah, I think that this resolution opens up opportunities for us to help address the issues. And I think that the point that it's a regional problem is a really, really good point. We are one of the smaller players, but we do have the potential to play a significant role in coordination with the two cities that we often operate with, along with, especially the county. And I think that this sets us up for opportunities. It also sets us up for a lot of discussion down the road because it's not restrictive. I mean, it opens up the door for a lot of possibilities, but that might be a good thing because flexibility is good and there's a lot that we'll be considering down the road. I'm ready to support it.
Thank you so very much. And before I move forward, I'll share this on the record. In 2017, I came up with an idea that if all four mayors representing the East County region got together and strategized regarding issues that impact us the most, then we could better position ourselves as a region to be competitive for funding. And one of those areas was homelessness. And so, since 2017, all these county mayors have met annually, except during the COVID season, we met visum and we strategized, and we brought in our city managers and came up with the concept of establishing an MOU regarding homelessness. That was the first step to bring us to where we are today. And what we know is that while 2017 looked a little bit differently, there is a need now more than ever to ensure that those who are unsheltered have a place to go. And so, I just wanted to share that with you, that a lot of work behind the scenes has gone into this to bring us to a space where we can have these conversations about a potential emergency shelter, but also to ensure that the policies that we have in place support that type of facility and to ensure that we are positioned to maximize the resources that are available, not only to the city to manage this homeless crisis, but also for other organizations as well. And so, that's the background info that most people don't know, and I'm really happy to see this come forward. I believe moving forward, that the elected leaders here will have their eyes on each and every step that is taken as we move forward. And so, is this something that I support or hardly ask, a little bit? Because at the end of the day, it's important that we do what we can to take care of each other, regardless of your background, regardless of the conditions that you are dealing with or living with. We have to take care of each other. So, I wanted to share that. And just know that this is important not only to Lemon Grove, but to each city located in the East County region. We do have this opportunity to approve, so what I think that would be, one would be declaring an emergency shelter crisis, and the second one would be to introduce the ordinance 463 to adopt by reference Appendix F of the 2022 California Building Standards Code. And so, we'll start with the first one. And do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt the resolution declaring an emergency shelter crisis in accordance with California Government Code Section 8690 through 8692.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask our speaker to call the rule.
Councilmember Snell?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron, absent.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gasco?
Aye.
Mayor Vaskes?
Aye.
The motion is adopted on a vote of four, zero, one.
Thank you. And next, we have the introduction of ordinance 463. And so, do we have a motion?
I'd like to move that we introduce.
It's on, isn't it? Oh, okay. I'd like to move that we introduce ordinance 463 to adopt by reference California Building Code Title 24, Appendix P.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask our speaker to call the rule.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron, absent. Councilmember Snell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gasco?
Aye.
Mayor Vaskes?
Aye.
The motion is adopted on a vote of four, zero, one.
Thank you so very much. I was considering if I have anything to share. City Councilmember, members for those of what called along the way, called as local partners in this effort to combat homelessness and to get this individual opportunity, as to, Councilmember, so to say, the dignity and pride. Madam Mayor, can you make a quick announcement? For those of you that are here for this special meeting that starts at 7:30, that will commence upon the conclusion of the City Council meeting. We're running just a little tad behind on the City Council meeting. Just want to make that announcement. It will be forthcoming once this formal meeting concludes.
Thank you. Next, we will have the councilmen making reports. During this time, you will be able to share information regarding meetings attended at the expense of the city. A report should be a brief summary of the meetings attended in your capacity as a city official. As a reminder, we want to be careful to keep these comments free and to stay within the Brown, Browners of the Brown Act, as simple as matters that are not on the agenda tonight. And I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
On June 23rd, I attended the California League of Cities Committee, Transportation, Communications, and Public Works Committee meeting in Pomona. And so far, I've been to two concerts and one movie in the park. And I just wanted to compliment our staff who's putting these events together. They're just doing an excellent job, and they're very well-attended, and people are just loving the music and the movies. And it's such a great event that brings our community together. And if you haven't been to a concert, they're Thursday night at 6:30. And I think we have four concerts left on Thursday nights. Please join us. Also, Lemon Grove is continuing to distribute food. We had a food distribution last week. We still have probably about 20 volunteers who come together and pack this food once a month. On Friday night, we pack up almost 400 bags of food and give them out on Saturday morning. And we meet us at the Lemon Grove Recreation Center. And I want to thank the city for allowing the Lions Clubs of Lemon Grove and Tri-Lemon Grove to continue to offer this service to our community members. It's much needed, and we have grants to do it for the next two years.
Thank you so very much. Please remember your time will be about two minutes. I'll segue to Councilmember Snell.
On June 21st, I was able to attend the East County Economic Development Council. Council, there's one of those. And it's a great opportunity to learn about business opportunities in our community, as well as grow what we already have. On June 23rd, I attended the Lake of Cities Summit up in Pomona, California. I serve on the Community Services Committee, and we discussed a lot in detail about housing solutions there. On June 23rd, I also attended, there's some economic funds available. We're part of the Southern Quarter Region, and San Bernardino was kicking We're part of the Southern Quarter Region, and San Bernardino was kicking off their regions. Uh, opportunity of what's called CERF funds, so C E R F funds. Um, and so we attended that to see what we can do down here in the Southern Quarter Region. We're getting ready for our kickoff soon, and that is money available to help our businesses. So we're gonna be fighting for those funds. On June 27th, I participated, um, with Assembly Member David Alvarez on trying to get legislation passed to prevent, uh, evictions in recreational vehicle parks. On July 5th, I met with Tamara Kohler, who is the CEO of the Regional Task Force on Homelessness about strategies we can employ here in Lemon Grove of funding opportunities for our community. Um, on July 6th, I attended Concert in the Park. July 11th, I met with Bishop Bowser and Amanda Brown regarding programs to.
You have 30 seconds.
Help our community, um, stay safe and deescalate, uh, you know, hardships in our community. People are very frustrated and sometimes that manifests as assault. So, you know, helping us work out our issues. On July 6th, I met with Assembly Member Brian Maychek, Office Chief of Staff, to discuss, uh, filling loopholes in support of the SB 567. And on July 13th, I attended the Emergency Rental Assistant Benefits. Time is up. Okay, webinar. There's one still available. Go get them.
Thank you so very much. Um, and, um, Mayor Proton Gaskell?
Okay, um, I wouldn't mind if some of my time could go to my colleagues. Um, I, I attended the June meeting of Metropolitan Transit System Board of Directors, and I'm not sure if I've given a report since the strike ended. But, but, uh, I, I think that you all know that, that there were two unions that went on strike against Trans- uh, Transstaff, which, which is a, a company that, that does transportation contracts with MTS. And I was really pleased that, uh, in both cases, the strike could be resolved and, and that the resolution was quite a, quite a success for the workers. Although there are ongoing difficulties and recovering from a strike is, is, is no easy thing. So I'll probably be reporting on some of the aftermath later. I also chaired, um, the quarterly meeting of the Accessibility Services Advisory Committee and, uh, of MTS, uh, which is several different groups that are involved in providing transportation for elderly people with special needs of various kinds. And, um, that, that meeting is really quite a, quite a wonderful thing. I was glad to be helpful. Uh, the people, people with disabilities were profoundly impacted by, by, by the strike and, and, but I'm really, I'm pleased to say that, that, so.
You have 30 seconds.
Uh, that in most cases, people were able to get the rides they needed, but that's something you should be particularly aware of. Thank you.
And I attended the League of California Cities Board of Directors meeting on July 13th and 14th, where we, um, discussed advocacy for the priorities, which are to protect and expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness, uh, increase the supply and affordability of housing by retaining local decision-making, improve public safety in California communities, and to safeguard essential local revenues and support fiscal sustainability. Um, a few of the things that, that I will point out, um, that may be of interest is that, um, they, they stress the importance of finding out for the local infrastructure hub. And so, um, I want to make sure that the city of Lemon Grove is a part of the infrastructure hub um, that outlines funding opportunities for maintenance and improvement. And another thing that was of interest to me, they mentioned that cities can apply for an emergency block grant. So, um, that is at the federal level of the National League of California Cities. And, um, another, um, point that I'd like to mention here is that 112 cities oppose SB 423. And while we were not on the list, I just wanted to mention that, um, uh, if you have an interest in finding out more information about SB 423, uh, definitely look it up and check out the fact sheet. And there's two bills right now that are under watch. It's AB 416 and AB, um, 1337. And, um, in addition to that, I attended and helped out at the Lemon Grove Distribution Department. And that completes my report. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Madam Mayor, City Council, um, I just wanted to announce, um, first off, there's a new face on the dais if you haven't noticed. Our new city clerk is with us this third week, first meeting. He comes from us from the Bay Area, um, specifically Monterey, and was clerk of the board for water special district, um, up in the area. So we're very glad to be here. Um, thank you for being a little patient as he gets used to our clunky system. Um, but, you know, he's done a great job thus far, and, um, hopefully he continues to come back with more many other weeks. Rene him, I knew him. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to my Public Works Director, Izzy Marquia. We've, it's been a while since we've had the council together, and I, I know last time we were here, we did a, um, a verbal report on the light situation on Lemon Grove Avenue in Palm or San Miguel. And I've asked Mr. Marquia to sort of give us the council updated where we're at on that particular project.
Thank you, Madam City Manager and members of the council, mayor. Appreciate your guys' patience, uh, as the city completes and undertakes this project. We are, uh, put it in, in football terms, at the one, one yard line. For the past several months, specifically over the past several weeks, unfortunately, our, uh, counterpart, SDGNE, has changed the scope of the project with regards to, uh, installing our pedestal and the requirements needed for that installation that weren't outlined when we originally, uh, when we originally signed off and started the project. Essentially, our next steps from here are, uh, installing a bollard to protect the electrical, the electric meter pedestal. That is scheduled to be done this week. Um, we are awaiting a clearance from a dig alert, and that, uh, our contractor has, has notified us that they estimate to have that done on Friday. Once the pedestal is installed, or sorry, the, the bollard is installed, SDGNE's inspection team has to come back out and inspect the bollard uh, in accordance to their, their requirements. Once that's done, uh, then the SDGNE, uh, team will come out again to do a turn-on, turn-off of that light. Um, so, uh, we'll have better idea of when the turn-on and off, uh, meeting will occur after the inspection, which will occur sometime early next week. Questions? How can I answer that? You know, the, for the members of the public, you know, the, the, this project wasn't as simple as it seems as far as, you know, turning on traffic signal. We, we had to, uh, install a new conduit and trench across Lemon Grove Ave. And we had to order a new controller. The current controller there is, uh, not only obsolete, but it's, it's failed. So we had to order a new controller to operate that traffic signal. And in, in addition, we had to install a new meter pedestal which powers the traffic signal and relocate, relocate it from its current, uh, location, uh, on the 711 side, so on Palm Street. So, um, that, that's the reason why it's, it's taken, uh, as far, as long as it's taken. But we're at the one yard line. If, uh, SDGNE doesn't, uh, you know, call on the offsides, we hope to complete this project here pretty soon.
And, and Madam Mayor, one last follow-up to follow up Councilmember Mendoza's, um, announcement at Concert in the Park this week is Manny Zepeda, who I believe is Sosa. And then we have a new event August 3rd, which is Hula Loo. It really is a kids band for kids and what have you, that we have all of our youngest residents in their favorite superhero shirts out there, um, dancing to the tunes of Hula Loo. Thank you. And, uh, before I turn this over to our city attorney, as we do have a closed session tonight, I'll announce that our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 1st at 6:00 PM. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Um, thank you so very much. We are adjourned to court session, uh, for a conference with legal counsel regarding antecedent litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9b2. Thank you.